Okay.
Okay, good morning. I'm gonna call the order this work session for the Perry Report of Education on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024. Mr. Drew, your roll call, please.
This Roland Miller.
Here.
This Larry Moore, this Minky, Dr. Rufford.
Here.
Mr. Bennington.
Here. We'll stand for the libel, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, Sue. Okay, next order of business, I will not, we will skip the safety briefing. They have a motion to adopt the proposed agenda. Dr. Rufford, Miss Larry Moore, and roll call, please.
Dr. Rufford.
Yes.
This Larry Moore.
Yes.
This Roland Miller.
Yes.
This Minky.
Yes.
Yes, the agenda passes. Mr. Hoffman, the superintendent's report.
Yeah, thank you. As Tom said, our last month's regular meeting, we wanted to do maybe a little bit deeper dive on the state report card. So this morning, this morning's agenda will focus primarily on that. So we have Brent Source Miller with us, and he and Joe together information, primarily Brent is the chief data person in terms of pulling it together and then making it something that we all can understand. So, so we're grateful for his efforts on this. As we, you know, get ready for the, this, this talk, again, we said this back last month, that the state report card, while we're a district that has five stars, we understand that it only captures just a snapshot of what we do here in Perry'sburg. So certainly our teachers and the effort that Brent will highlight, some of those things are to be commended and recognized. And so we, we want to take pause to do that. And our students who, you know, do very well and work very hard to do well, I think that's important to recognize. But there's so much that goes into a Perry'sburg education experience that doesn't show up on the state report card. And we would say this whether we were a five-star district or a three-star district. And it's, it's a snapshot and it's an important snapshot. It's one that will be used over and over again, but it is something that we, that drives a lot of our internal conversations. So with that, I'll turn it over to, to Mr. Source Miller. Good morning, Brent.
Morning. Thanks for having me. Now that I'm outed for needing to get a hobby. This is really, I think, the second time, seventh time I've been through sort of looking at the state report card, minus the COVID year, because we didn't really get one. What I like to do is go through the report card, what the components mean, how they're calculated, look at state trends, because there's certainly components that are easier to get than others. Look at us against our similar districts. And when I mention similar districts, they will be the five generated from Ohio Department of Ed or O D E W. Not ones that I pull out of a hat or say, ooh, we want to be compared to them. But also look at how we've done historically as well. So with that in mind, first want to just go over what goes in an overall rating. There, there's five components. Achievement and progress are double the weight of the other three: graduation rate, gap closing, and early literacy. So there's five this year. Next year, there'll be six, which I'll talk about at the end. But for right now, there are five. This is what that looks like in a, in a pie chart, if you're, if you're visual. So first, the, the overall. Wanted to look compared to last year, this year compared to last year, how districts were rated across the state. And if you look at this, it became a tad bit harder to get that highest rating this year as compared to last year. There were, sorry, I'll go back for a second. There were seventy-five, sixty-eight districts. There were seventy-five districts in 2023 that were five stars. There were sixty-eight this year. And so what we wanted to do is look at that sixty-eight in particular. You didn't have to have all fives to have a five-star rating. As a matter of fact, there were only eighteen of the sixty-eight that had all fives. We had four fives and one four. And you see, we are along with eighteen other districts in that little bracket. But it, it goes all the way down to, to one district had three fives and two threes. It's just the way it's calculated. So I just wanted to put that out there. You don't have to have perfect score across the board to be a five-star district.
It's due to the weight.
It's due to the weight.
I wonder, I say, wait a minute, how do we come to awareness and still have five stars? So that was because of the weight?
Correct. And this is what that looks like compared to last year. You see, this year compared to last year, there are more districts that scored fives across the board and just comparison. This is a look at, okay, within the five-star districts in the state of Ohio, how did they do on the various components? What did that look like? And at the top, you'll see in 2023, you'll see that almost always, all of them, seventy-three out of seventy-five that year, got the gap closing. That, that was a gap. Achievement and graduation were pretty high. But then you look at progress, you look at early lit. I mean, less than half of the five-star districts got a five in early lit. That's a harder component. The bottom, you'll see how they fared this year. Pretty similar, although the percentage is raised a bit and for progress and early lit, but they're still harder to get than the other components. So going back, when you look at your report card when you were a kid, there were easier grades and there were harder grades. There were grades that you were a little bit more proud of because they're harder to get than the ones where the hurdle might be a little lower.
Why is there such a significant drop between twenty-three and twenty-four, do you think, in the gap closing and the achievement? A slight increase in, in progress and early lit, which doesn't explain the drop in achievement and gap?
I have somewhat of a theory, Sue, but I'll, I'll share that when we get to achievement. Okay? But I, I think, it's just a theory, right?
Okay. Well, you're curious, and you should stop.
So here's how we did compared to our similar districts. And our similar districts, Avon Local, Beaver Creek, Frexview, Broadview Heights, Forest Hills, we have a new addition. This year, Loveland took over for King's Local. They were five and six. Now they're six and five. They just switched places.
They're in the same area.
They're the same area down by Cincy. And so a wise data person, I always looked at the twenty. Now I look at the five. Why? Because the five are most like us. So I will refer to them as we're going through the different components, also how they did in comparison to us as well. One of the things I like to look at also is enrollment. Okay, of the five-star districts, of our sixty-eight, how big are they? Because I think when we go through this, I'll share that some components really are, it seems the data would tell us that smaller districts have an easier time getting some components than bigger districts. But this is a look at size, just size of districts. And you'll see that thirty-one of the sixty-eight have less than two thousand kids. Or two of them are smaller than our largest elementary. Thirteen are smaller than HPI and twenty-eight are smaller than Perry'sburg High School, just for context. This is a look in, sorry, Susan. I took their overall rating points and just shared, where are we rated in the state when it comes to overall rating points? You'll find us at thirty. And so this gives you an idea, context, of where we are, thirty out of six hundred and seven, in terms of overall points. In terms of Northwest Ohio, you have Otto Hills and you have us. This is a look at largest districts in that sixty-eight. We're eleventh largest. Who knows, next week, we may be ten, kidding. And on, on the right column, you'll just see the overall rating, where we are in that, in that grouping. So you'll see in the bigs, really behind Upper Arlington, Sycamore Community, Strongsville. Amazing. This is a look at some of that data, but also I went a little into it and said, okay, most diverse districts, what do we look like? Students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged, where do we rate in that sixty-eight? I don't know what it tells us, but it's nice to start tracking it and watch it over time to see what it means for us. And this is a comparison of just Wood and Lucas County. We just looked how we compare to the seventeen local schools with overall rating.
I think your comment about how things vary, oh, no, it was Tom who said that, you know, it doesn't say everything. And having spent so much time with Chris Farley, what she wasn't saying, to see Toledo City at the bottom, I think is such a disservice because of all the things that they do in that district that doesn't show up in that rating. So they get a, they get a bad, they get a bad rating, yet they're doing remarkable things with all of their different schools. So, and twelve thousand fifty, oh, thirteen thousand?
Well, it's a, it's, it's one grading system.
Yeah.
For six hundred and seven very diverse and different districts for size, makeup, economically, you name it. It's just different. World mindset, really. So, so that's why it's important to dig into each component and say, okay, what does it measure though? So I want to take, talk a little bit about building overall ratings, because while every district is rated on five components, your building rating is very dependent on your grade span and the makeup of your buildings. So for example, elementary, our elementary schools and our high school each have four components that contribute to the overall rating. They're a little different in the elementary has an early literacy component, and high school has a graduation component, but they all have four components, while HPI and the junior high have just three. So when you go to building ratings, it's not always apples to apples. It's not always apples to apples when we get to achievement and performance index either, because it's the grade spans and the number of kids you look at and how you're looking at them. So we're gonna try real hard to point some of that out. This is what it looked like overall across the state for building overall ratings. And you see, it sort of mirrors the district overall ratings in that it became a little bit more difficult to get the highest rating this year as compared to last. So on our O D E dashboard, this is the new bottom of that dashboard. This was something they added this year. So it's sort of a quick look. Wanted to show that, just to highlight that, not necessarily that it's real great to read at this point, but it doesn't matter because I'll go through what each building rating is when we go through the components anyways. But if you want to go on O D, scroll all the way to the bottom and you'll see this as a, as a nice quick check. It is a nice addition. Let's give them props when we can. Now, I just said that all buildings are different, but I did take all three thousand two hundred fifty-nine buildings that were rated, that had a rating, and said, okay, in overall rating points, where do we stand amongst that three thousand two hundred and fifty-nine? And so you'll see there, upper quarter in all our buildings, as high as our high school being in the top one point three percent. Just to give you a big picture look. So the achievement component, the achievement component is one of those that has changed three or four years ago. It used to have two factors that, that you looked at. It used to be indicators met and performance index. Now it's solely performance index. And you'll see a, a look at three-year span of how districts have fared in this component. You see, this is gradually become a little bit harder as well.
So what you're saying is that, that they change the requirements every year, like you're raising the bar?
Well, let's talk about that for a sec. So let me talk what performance index is first. So they take the eight thousand six hundred tests that we took last year. There's eight thousand, about eight thousand six hundred, because I'm trying to count the fall reading, because that could count if it's a higher score than their spring score. And they weigh how students do, and then there's a formula that gives you your performance index. Now, what has changed, what does change over time is the ceiling, is the maximum district performance index score. This was a good change that the state made. Years ago, they would always divide by one-twenty, because that was the maximum number of points you could possibly get, one-twenty. And what we found every year is we had seven to nine districts get the highest rating. Now, if we had a class at Perry'sburg High School that had six hundred and seven kids, and seven to nine kids got As, you guys would be getting a ton of calls. It's a faulty grade scale. It's terrible, right? So what they started to do a couple of years ago is they take the top two percent and they take the average of the top two percent, and then that becomes the ceiling. So what does change over time, Lori, is last year, that ceiling was one oh eight point eight. This year, it's one oh nine point three. So it does change a bit. I don't know the degree of impact of point five points, but it does change every year.
It's creating a curve.
Somewhat, but not somewhat, not your traditional curve. Otherwise, you know, we'd always have a balance, right? Our, our bell is a little bit different than the nice, pretty one.
No, no, it's for standard D V A, standard, just, you're saying the, the top end is set by reality, not by, not by theoretical.
Well, the other part of it is, I don't know if one-twenty was reality. I mean, that is ridiculous. And it, it's, it was just, it was deflating every year to see the, you know, the five, sorry, most affluent schools sitting there and everybody else saying, great, good for you. So this is a, a look at, at us over time. And you'll see, there's just, we just have subtle changes. They're not big swoops. And so the green indicates the number of kids that are proficient and above. The blue, the accelerated advanced, anybody accelerated or up. And the purple gives you a look at advanced and advanced plus. Now, an increase in the purple is something to be proud of, for sure. And the one thing we didn't mess, um, share earlier is this is also a category, if you're a district that has an untested percentage, you are penalized greatly, which is beyond any district's control, truly. So we've been pretty steady at point five percent. Of course, we like it zero, but point five percent. But I remember the year after COVID where you had districts with seven to nine percent untested. And so you're looking and saying, what does that mean? What does, what does that mean? Because you go back to this scale, you get basically a zero in the grade book for someone that didn't take the test. This is a look at us over time. Usually I put a nice black bar over twenty-twenty. I didn't. That twenty-twenty is just a reflection of third grade reading that year because we were all sent home in the spring. This is a look at our similars and how we fared. And on the right-hand column is sort of our state rating, what that looks like. This is a look at that same data that I shared with you with the overalls, but this is looking at how we rate in the top one hundred for performance index, just to give you some context. So last year, I took a dive into, you know, that whole notion that sometimes this testing is, is, is more geared or more readily attainable for those districts with, that, that we would deem more affluent. And so what I wanted to look at is, okay, in the top one hundred P I, where do these districts fall in terms of free and reduced percentage? You'll see last year, eighty of the hundred had twenty percent or low or lower, um, free and reduced percentage. So you looked at it, my, oh, yeah, pretty much panning out, you know, what people said, right? You had a few outliers. You had one above ninety. You had one in forty. You see, this year on twenty-twenty-four, it's a little bit more scattered. And transparently, even for us, we were below ten percent free and reduced for twenty-three. We're at about over thirteen percent in twenty-four. So I think it truly is maybe a reflection of need across the state and those numbers going up across the state, but it is certainly something to, to look at. Here's a comparison of districts locally. Here's a look at buildings. No, no real swift moves to of note, right? Stayed pretty constant. And here's a look at our buildings and how we were able to, to fare. And if you look at three thousand two hundred fifty-four schools that had a performance rating, this is what we look like when everybody's thrown together. Now, what we are able to do with performance indexes, we're able to become a little bit more granular with our look in that K-four buildings across the state, there's two hundred and thirty-two. Why is that important? Because they have the same number of tests to be able to compare apples to apples. So if you look amongst the two hundred and thirty-two buildings that are K-four, this is where we sort of rated within that two hundred and thirty-two. For five-six buildings, there's even fewer. There's only thirty-six in the entire state. So this is what we look like amongst those thirty-six. And then here's the junior high. There's a hundred and four. I thought there would have been more, a hundred and four. Seven-eight buildings. And then there's five hundred and forty-eight, nine-twelve buildings.
Sorry, keep it. So what, how do they classify seven-twelve?
Well, I could have thrown seven-twelve buildings in, but that wouldn't have been apples to apples.
Right, but is that, but that's a different number?
No, they're categorized as high schools, but they're seven-twelve. So, so what we get is these, we get about twenty spreadsheets. So on one of the spreadsheets, they list building makeup. So you can separate the seven-twelves from the nine-twelves because we want to compare our nine-twelve with other nine-twelves. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head how many seven-twelves are.
No, I'm just curious because, you know, again, they report cards for every single different district makeup. Doesn't matter. You have to report those same year. And that's just public school.
And there's also K-twelve buildings, so.
Right.
So, uh, this is a bad transition, sorry, bad segue. We're now going to progress component. And progress component may be, well, I'll say that in a sec. This is a category, a component that, as you can see, is becoming increasingly more difficult for districts to get. I mean, there's less districts that got the progress component five-star than the overall five-star, just for context. And I think this presents challenge because this is something I cut, I copied and pasted right out of the tech manual for progress component. So this is why, you know, sometimes we begin to twitch because do we, do we understand it? Like, what, what's going on? And so I, we'll try. What, what we're measuring, there's, there's two things that come out of this. It's a gain or growth index. I hate that they use them interchangeably, but sometimes you see gain index, sometimes you see growth index. This measures how, did students grow as much as we thought they would this year? If you can imagine, you have eighty kids, they're all in line, in their place. What it's measuring in is did they stay in the same place the next year for their performance? Or do they move backwards? Do they stay in the same place? So positive growth index means your students grew more than expected, more than expected. It's positive. Not expected, more than expected. A negative growth means they grew less than expected. That doesn't mean they didn't grow, right? They didn't go backwards because they're negative. They just didn't grow as much as you thought they should, right? Or they're expected. Close to zero means they're about where you expected them to be. Okay? So that's an entirely different mindset for people that live in the world of grade scales and percentages and everything. You mean zero is expected growth? Yes. Positive means more, negative means less than expected. So then it's twofold. They also measure effect size. Effect size, they measure how big or important was the growth. This is when they don't look specifically locally at your students. They look at the data statewide. And they say comparatively, with performance across the state, you guys made a huge improvement compared to the masses. So it's twofold. You got to get a five-star. You got to meet the threshold in both areas. We have folks that have a high gain growth index, but didn't get the, that meet the mark in effect size. So they wouldn't get a five-star because they didn't get both markers. A small effect size suggests that your teaching strategies are helping, but not enough to make a noticeable impact. Now, I can't stress enough, it doesn't mean kids aren't growing. So when you see some schools with negatives, it doesn't mean they're not growing. Kids grow just by being with them and teaching them every year and every moment. So with that in mind, when this is calculated, it's twofold. Everybody starts at three. So if you are between negative two and plus two, you stay at three for growth, gain, growth index. I'm just going to say index so I don't have to say the two Gs. If you're greater than two, you rise to four. If you're less than negative two, you go down to two. Okay, that's the first stage. Then they look at effect size. And for districts, if you're greater than point one, then you go up to five. If you met that threshold, you could go down. Now you notice there's a different marker for districts and schools. Point one for districts, point two for schools. And the rationale with that is you have more fluctuation with schools. There's more of them. They're less confident, so they give a little bit of a wider range. At least that's what I was told.
So Brian, you coached all-state high jumpers, so if you were to convert this to.
Thank you. You have that on record. Two years in a row.
So if you were to convert this to like an athlete with high jumping where that bar is set and yeah, who gets a medal or not? Or is there any comparisons or analogy that you have to.
Yeah, so if I had an athlete I love like Rashad Brown, and I knew that he could make opening height, great. He's at zero. We walked away and he did 6'6" and we weren't expecting 6'6". Plus two and above, we are happy. He didn't make opening height, we're all unhappy. We're all going to the bus. We're all drooping, but it's negative. So, but I don't know how to use that analogy to affect size other than if we look meets across the, the, say it was a really windy day, like the state championship that year, and two kids made opening height and you're on the podium, we win, you know? I, I don't, I don't know how to use that for that, but. So the funny thing about progress, not the funny thing, the frustrating thing, is what we get at this time of the year basically is a heat lamp. We get some overall numbers and a heat lamp. And this is what our heat lamp looks like on our dashboard. They color code it. They show where significant evidence says you're, you're larger, you're exceeding expectations or, or you're, you're, you know, by a larger magnitude, or you're just succeeding, or you're meeting student growth. The real granular data doesn't come out until October 23rd. And it populates on an entirely different website called our EVOS website. We're able to look at teachers. We're able to look at students. So I think that contributes to the twitching beyond the formula is we don't get data, autopsy data really, until later, after the first quarter of the year. And then later in the year, about mid-year, the state will come out and populate EVOS with projections of how your current students could do. But it's not till later in the year. It's almost like semester time. So I think that is, can contribute to the frustration. So when, i- if you ask more granular questions, I might look at you and go, October 23rd is the date we're told. We can start digging in and looking at it a little closer. This is what our overall number looks like. And I do want to add that two years ago, because of COVID, because of taking a year break, being able to calculate past performance and where kids should perform, two years ago, there was just one year they looked at in terms of this. Last year, they looked at two years. This year, we get to look at three years back. Why? Because we built that bank of history over time and they're able to calculate it. And so last year, we were at a index, a G-index of plus 1508. This year, we're at 27.4 and you're like, okay, is that good? What does that mean? It's very good. When I say composite ranking, this composite ranking is out of 607. I think, 605 maybe, 600 plus. This is where we stood compared to our similar districts. Now, you may look at that and say, you don't know how to add because Beaver Creek's at 1322 and Loveland's at 1283 and you've got Loveland above Beaver Creek. That's purposeful because I'm looking just at the G-index, not the effect size. Beaver Creek scored lower because of the effect size component as compared to Loveland. When I said we were 10 overall, this is what those 10 districts look like. And I can tell you, going back, I previously said sometimes the performance index, it was easier for schools with smaller enrollment. It seemed they scored higher than, than larger districts. This is the opposite. Why? Because there's probably more to grow, right? More areas to grow. Yeah, but generally. It's different, it's different than seeing the new Breamans and Colitas on the list. And this is all of our comparables again, and just listing where they were in terms of their star rating. This is what you'll see on our dashboard. I'm going backwards. Sorry. This is us locally. Fat fingers. So for buildings, this is a, a look at where buildings were rated last year and this year. I think we saw a more dramatic shift overall in districts going down, and this is more of a subtle. This is what it looks like for our buildings. October 23rd. And this is out of 3,025. So if you look at just K4 buildings, this is a look at K4 buildings. And so you're, I, I'm able to pull it out of performance index and value added because we have the data in the spreadsheet. Some of the others are harder to pull. Here's a look at five, six buildings. Here's a look at seven, eight buildings. And nine, 12. Gap closing. Gap closing. Discrepancies across the board in this one. And this truly, so you have a number of points that you're able to get. We have, we had 68 points we're total, we're, we're able to get. Now, I'm going to go through this. This is where you get great discrepancies in what the component means dependent on what your district is. Quite frankly, the less diverse your district is, the less components you have, right? So we had 68 and you're, you're, you're probably looking at that going 79.4 when I was in school was not a, a, a good score. What does it mean for us? And I'll share, that's a very good score and I'll share why going forward. So first to look at across the state, this was a component that has become increasingly hard to get as well. You see a huge drop off. And this is what it looks like compared to our similars. Next to the score, you'll see the number of possible points you could get. So what we, we had 68 possible points. Brexby Broadview Heights, Newman, was able to get 65. You know, Avon 67. It just was different and you're in different brackets. We, we have a, show you a look at our chronic absenteeism score compared to our similars, which we're very proud of because that's one you want to be low. Lower. And also a look at our gifted performance index because this is where that gets looked at a little closer, this area. In terms of our max 68 points, like who, who's in our group? This is what our group looks like. This is how we fared in our 68 possible points group. And those are the districts that could have earned 68 points. So what goes into those 68 points? This is a look at what our dashboard looks like. They look at achievement. They look at growth in math and ELA, graduation, English learners, chronic absenteeism. There's the trifecta for gifted. And then you get an overall points. And I, while I don't often do all 20, it'd look pretty cool to do all 20 and see us completely to the right side for chronic absenteeism. It's a reflection of our work and students with, in well-being, right? Not as well as I'd like to. I mean, I can't even. It, it's a certain number of days away and I couldn't even tell you off the top of my head. Sorry, that's me being old and not being able to hold as much information.
It's in hours.
It's an hour.
It's just so many, it's like 72 hours within a month or.
That's why.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's either excessively absent or habitually truant. So it's, if you miss so many hours within a month, and then so many, or so many total hours across the whole year, you can be in any one of those categories and those both factor into the chronic absenteeism.
I'm going with a lot. I think, I think always like when we get in this, the important thing is it's the same metric for everybody. And knowing the same metric for everybody and where we stand, this is certainly an area to be, while we want that to be zero, it's certainly an area to be proud of. This is a comparison of just locally, what it looked like for us. So in terms of school buildings, this is what it looked like last year compared to this year. And this is what we look like. This is out of 3,339. So I went down a rabbit hole. And I, you'll probably see this when we share with you, but of the 3,339 buildings, I wanted to know what the possible points breakdown looked like. So for example, it could go as high as earning 70. There were 13 schools that could have earned 70 possible points, their max. All the way down to 18 schools that could earn five points. So you can see there's great fluctuation in the, in the number of, of points, max points you could earn. 207 schools were able, 310 schools were able to get 36 points. So just as an example, down to 66 at 41. So this is just a, a breakdown. And then I wanted to see where our schools fell and what that looked like for them. So for example, Fort Meigs and Woodland both could earn a max of 38 points for their schools. And in their 38 max point slot, there was 131 schools that could have done that. And so you'll see where, where they ranked comparatively speaking. Or Woodland could have earned 41 possible points. There were 66 schools and where their rank was. Again, just trying to do the apples to apples comparison. All the way from the high school, 24 schools could earn 56 points and they were in top in that, that little area. Pause. Early lit. This is an area and you'll see breakdown of where districts fared steadily low. This is the one where kids go home and say hardly anyone ever gets an A in that class. You say, this is what our dashboard looks like for us. It calculates our overall reading proficiency, proficiency, proficient and above percentage of students in third grade. The percentage of students that are promoted to fourth grade. And then also there's an improving K3 literacy component. And to explain that, every year, at the start of the year, we're required to benchmark kids. And there's a bank of vendor assessments that we can choose from. What we use might be different than schools around us. We're all choosing and selecting from a bank, but the norms and the assessments could be very different. So if a student fares below a certain threshold, they are considered at risk. And they get the pleasure of having a reading improvement and monitoring plan or a RIMP. And you qualify that during that benchmark period and you are on a RIMP for a calendar year. Even if a month later, we find out, oh, that's not right. It's kids killing it. Doesn't matter. You're on it for a year until the next fall during that first benchmarking period of that next year. Now, the other caveat to this is we are required to do kindergarten students within the first 20 days. This is why I'm glad Joe's not here because he'd have a stroke. First 20 days. So I can't tell you, I, just an example, four years ago, I know this off the top of my head, we had 112 kindergarten students that were at risk. Why? Because they were kindergarten and it drove us nuts, 112. At the midpoint, at our mid-year benchmarking, we found that 54 kids were at risk. So what you're getting is you're getting these little people walking into this big building, figuring out what you want from them and what school is, and giving them assessment that they might not even know what you're asking for. And then they're given a label of at risk because we're required to put them in that label. First 20. Now I'll backtrack and say 17 years ago, when I started at Frank, we didn't benchmark kids till mid-year kindergarten kids. We didn't do it. Why? Because we could choose back then. We didn't think it was humane. We didn't think it made sense because we wanted our little people to figure out what school was. So we didn't even do it till semester time, but now we have to do it in the first 20 days. So for some districts, you'll see this. We go to compare to our similars, four out of five of them, I see this. Like what? They don't have greater than 10% of their kindergarten class that they consider at risk? And what that gets you, what that gets you is you have an entirely different rating system, a way to calculate your score. So I can tell you, the past two years, you have eighty-three districts that had a forty, sixty, forty. And you had five hundred and twenty-two that did a forty, thirty-five, twenty-five. And that has a tremendous impact on what the score is. Tremendous. So why? What impact? So if you look at last year, twenty twenty-three, of the fifty-five five stars in this this component, forty of them were on the sixty, forty scale. In other words, they didn't calculate improving K-three literacy because they said we have less than ten percent. This year, out of fifty-five, forty-eight are on the sixty, forty scale. So eight, almost eighty-seven point three percent, eighty-seven point three percent of all our five stars are on the sixty, forty scale. Another way to look at it, if you throw the eighty-three, this is where they landed. Fifty-seven point eight percent were five stars, twenty-eight point nine this year, twenty-eight point nine or four, all the way down to two stars, right? Five hundred and twenty-two districts, us included, in that bigger pot, one point three percent got a five star. And you'll see the breakdown. So this is a crazy, crazy score. So what I did is looked at ours, this is ours, uh with the three factors, this is how we rated, we were four-star. And quite frankly, this is one of those, you take the class, sometimes you took the class, you gotta be and you said, great, I'll take it, because it was hard. And then we don't want the A, but I also factored, if we were calculating like everybody else, what would our score be? So I knew, what would our score be? And just to give you an example, our similars, oh no, did I do that? I didn't show our similars, did I? I didn't want to out them. So just to give you an example, last year we had fif- we recognized fifteen point nine percent of our kindergarten classes at risk. Why? Because we're honest and that's what the assessment told us. Our similars had percentages of eight point seven, four point six, five point eight and three point seven. Now, if that's accurate, great, because the one district that people like to compare us to, if we're four times more likely to have an at-risk student in kindergarten and get in a higher percentage in third grade reading, our teachers are kicking butt. Obviously, our teachers are moving our kids more than, great, you can look at it that way. Here's what we looked at locally. And I will tell you, uh, well, no, I won't, just say two out of three above us were two-factor and not three-factor. Here's what buildings look like. And here's us, our rating, okay, three-factor, what would two-factor look like? Not a good segue again, sorry. Graduation component. I don't dive greatly into this, you'll see it improving uh across the state because this is a, this has been pretty constant for us. And if, a lot of times, if we're ever ding, it's because we have chosen to keep our kids longer, right? This is that when you're penalized. So um I don't dig into it deeply, just other than, right? We chose to have them longer than the period that they would give us credit for because we think it's in the best interest of the student. And we won't stop making those decisions, it's just I think this is a, we we score pretty decently, why why dig into it as much? We do great next to our similar districts, uh we meet the marker. And um so that that's a component. And here's how we do locally comparatively. And again, it's hard to know.
So when you say that, obviously by law, students can stay in school until they're twenty-two years old.
Yeah.
Based on their needs, so thankfully Perry's birth educates the child based on their need, not improving the graduation component based on what the state says they should be doing, not what's best for the kids.
Right.
Third common is a problem.
Yeah.
They're still in school.
By their laws.
You're doing the right thing.
So um this is the really long title one, uh college, career, workforce, military readiness component. While um some of our components have three factors, two factors, some even one factor, this has eleven. It's not rated this year, it will be a rating next year. I I do like to share, and this is our twenty, this is when it's good to be on the left side. This is our score compared to our similar twenty. So I I I, this is how we compare locally. I guess I'll just say, not rated this year, we're in a good place. So in in terms of takeaways, uh I think number one, we continue to perform at a high level compared to to peers and and districts across the state and people we should be comparing ourselves to and it's really on the shoulders of the hard work of our professionals who are are working extremely, extremely hard for the the good of our kids. So we have a lot to be proud of. Um, another takeaway is I think our one plan, as we begin to dive deep into that, really talks about strategies of identifying and addressing student needs. And I think when it comes to uh just like some of the things we talked about progress, uh this is when that plan is aligned with what we see on on the report card. So that that's a positive as well. Uh, another takeaway is recognizing the well-being of our students has had an impact on our low chronic absenteeism percentage. I I, that is, when you look across the state and if you, you know, want to get geeky like me and go to other districts' dashboards, look at their score. Because a lot of people would be pretty envious of our eight-point whatever, it's pretty good. I think our implementation of foundations and and wit and wisdom, they were driven by state mandate, but it is a great move for us and it's gonna have a a really big impact in our early literacy. Moving forward, we're just scratching the surface with that. Year two with foundations and year one with wit and wisdom, over time, I think that's just gonna be tremendous. And um the other, like the 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 long title, CCWM, I think that's what they put in their caption. It's not given this year, but I think we're set up in a in a really good position for next year. And more to come. Questions? Comments?
I I love the data, um my question, I have two questions. One is, what are, what are those other schools, especially in early literacy? What are they doing to, oh, let's face it, effectively get around and make themselves a two-factor instead of a three?
I got a lot of suspicions, but um I don't think I'd be kind to say them without truly knowing. I have a hard time believing that that some districts that aren't as fortunate as us report less need. I just don't understand it. So I I don't, I don't have an answer for that. Um, but I do know the state is putting in, has recently put in some safeguards where you have to report scores, specific scores, other than yes or not being at risk. So we'll see if that has an impact. I'm not sure though. The other thing, and um like for example, our instrument, we use Renaissance. We found out earlier this year that they changed norms. Like how? Our numbers jumped because, not because we're based on last year's numbers, but the new norms made our numbers jump in that more kids were identified. Well, I do know at large school district in Central Ohio threw a, quite a fit to Renaissance. And Renaissance is reevaluating and changing the norm. So I think there is a little tail that wakes the dog that goes on as well. So I I don't have an answer to that. We used to, now we're reporting scores, so that may have an impact. I said may.
This year, yes. Previously, it was essentially self-reporting yes or no, on track or not track, or not on track.
Yeah, I looked at it this morning, there were, there were some, and it may be accurate, that reported zero, zero.
Wow. And we we got a call, we may or may not have gotten a call from from the state saying, hey.
What did he do?
Star assessment, did you notice that maybe they were a little over identifying?
Yep, Joe got a call. Jumped all over it.
Yeah, the other question that I would have when I saw that was, what are the preschool programs in the districts that are on the two?
Yeah.
Because that that, you know, in the first twenty days, that that's one of the main differences too.
Do we have pretty good connections with our preschool?
Oh, incredible, and Kristen Coaster's an incredible leader over there. We got a really, really, really good preschool.
And we have a, yeah, but it's more a question to me of.
And they had, they had to make the LA switch just like we did.
Yeah.
Just like we did.
But and that that's great for the kids that are coming through that program, but the number of children that aren't coming through that program is pretty significant in our district. And I just wonder what percentage of children in other districts are coming through different preschools and what types of preschools.
And that would be not in spreadsheets, that would be harder.
Yeah.
Question is, I'm sorry, how many of our kindergartners have come through our preschool?
I would, I would venture to say thirty-five to forty percent because the total enrollment is about one eighty, one ninety, but that's over a multi-year span. I said generously, I'd say between thirty and forty percent. But the other part of it is, is that's um, that's an identified need-type preschool. So sometimes those 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 students have a a longer road academically or or behaviorally.
We'll we'll see next year what this looks like, now that people aren't self-reporting and they're reporting the score, I think it'll look different.
But isn't it not, is it based on two different assessments? So what are they using? So it's not the KRA?
What are, what are? No, you can't, you can't do a multi-factor, you have to pick one. And it's, it was typically the first one that you administered.
Which is typically, I mean, so that's based on, a district could pick something else.
Correct.
They could do a KRA.
Right.
That's observation.
And I'll be honest with you, we play the game, we, we used to use Ames Web. And we switched and we tried one year, we tried to use KRA, but the differences were.
And to me, I mean, having that assessment is, I I think what really bothers me is that label, that a child is told that they're already behind in reading or that they are needing help with reading when they're twenty days of the kindergarten.
Child and parent. I mean, if I'm, this is my first child, what? Four weeks into school, you're telling me this about, what?
But it's a one day, yeah, and it's a one-day assessment.
Yeah.
And isn't it computer-based?
No, um.
Some are.
Some, but we've gone need to need. But it, but it did, the numbers shook out similarly, computer-based or need to need. Right, right.
So knowing kindergarteners, they have to use a mouse to take the test and everything is touchscreen. So if you've ever seen a kindergartner, and I know we don't do that by other districts, trying to touch the screen and you're trying to tell them to use a mouse, it's it's like herding cats, it's the most, because everything's touch, your laptop or iPad, your phones are all touchscreen. Yeah, we have, the state gives this assessment of a mouse.
And they're wondering why it's coming.
Yeah, it was, it's very, that's, I think, what is the most frustrating, is it's not, everybody has to choose, which is, I mean, choo- choice is great. But when you're doing that for twenty days in for kindergartners, come on now.
The other thing I will add is sometimes the norms, if you call down, they do this. So if you call down to ODE, they'll say, no, that's what the vendor tells us. And and the vendor will say, no, that's what ODE is telling us. And if you're trying to negotiate, okay, what are the norms and that seems this, 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 and they, there's a lot of finger pointing, so.
I should probably go back and clarify my question, the um with preschool programs, I'm not talking about just specifically our preschool programs, are we having conversations with the other preschool programs that are within our district or that the majority of our kids come from?
I know that a a couple of years ago, when Leslie Stow was a teacher on special assignments, she began that conversation. And some preschools were more collaborative than others in that conversation. So I would say for sure, Kristin in ours, it's not as consistent depending on what preschool is outside of that.
And then my other question, see, what are we doing at HPI?
So we have begun curriculum review in in math and um this year, they're in year one. And um ELA, I mean, they're, they're in first year of implementation of wit and wisdom this year. So there's a lot of transformation in offering, especially in ELA.
They also changed their teaming this year, so they're, they're, they changed some things up with the Lubin and made some adjustments to some of the the makeup of their teams too, so.
I I would also add that um last year, the ability to have a RIMP was contained to K-three prior to last year. Last year, we had our first group of fourth graders that had REMPS. This year, we have our first group of fifth graders that have REMPS. Because you don't get off of a RIMP until you pass an ELA state assessment. And so that is something that over the years is going to move into the junior high and high school. So there, HPI is also administering REMPS for the first time this year.
But we'll have more detailed data then in October.
Right. We'll be able to look under the hood.
I think it's important to point out too, when you talk about state report cards, it's only for public schools. Charter schools, private schools do not have to, they don't have the same reported requirements as public schools do yet, they take public school money. Which is obviously frustrating, um because they, all the, you know, districts are this, that, and this, they take kids, they can choose what kids they take, don't choose.
We also don't have to pull a kindergartner in the first twenty days. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Brian. Very well done, as always. Yeah. All right, we're gonna move into the consent agenda, uh it's only one item, I'll clean up of of uh chaperones for homecoming, so can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Ms. Menke? Roll call.
Ms. Laramore.
Yes.
Ms. Menke. Dr. Rappert.
Yes.
Ms. Rolla Miller.
Yes.
Yes, consent agenda is approved. Final item is board discussion, I'm gonna go ahead and start off, I want, I'm going to, I don't know if the right word is propose or or set a s- a special, I'm gonna discuss the need for a special meeting uh next week. Some of you have been asking, Mr. Haas or myself and the parenting community about, you know, with the upcoming levy, and um depending on the results of that, what does the district look like if the levy should not pass? I think the answer to that right now, behalf of the administration, us as board members and even the campaign committee is we don't necessarily know yet because we haven't talked about that. The administration's been working on what that plan is. We haven't seen that plan. We haven't discussed that plan. The administration needs some sort of confirmation that if we have to go that route, that that is the route that the board generally, generally support. So because we are five, six weeks out from election day, thank you, 35 days, that is not something that can wait till the regular board meeting. I take a look at my own travel plans and I'm, I'm out of town next week. I know there's some other, you know, just, I know you, how I know some people in here, those personal things that are going on towards the end of some weeks too. So I'm going to be bold and suggest next Tuesday, 6 o'clock in the evening for a special meeting.
Oh, Tuesday, the 8?
Tuesday, the 8.
There are 31 days in October and everybody has to do something.
But we're the group that you really want to spend time with.
Group I love and want to be, oh, okay. That's proof. That's foundation meeting night. I've, I've been to like one meetings.
We've all enjoyed covering that. They probably, probably wouldn't mind being without a, a board member at that meeting.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's, that's the only thing that I have that I, is just that, so. And I'm sorry, what time did you say it's?
6 o'clock.
And where?
Probably the camp here so that we can record it.
Is that enough time before the levy presentation that Frank, or is that?
We'll have to talk about that.
Yeah. Good point.
Didn't know if you wanted to move to 5:30 or?
Yeah, Brooke was covering that, so.
There you are. Okay.
Can always just head out, head over there.
I don't know what time Frank said.
It, it, I mean, it's at 7, yeah, uh, 6:30. And I can always, I can always leave and go over there and do it.
The, I know that, I know that Tom wrote, um, I mean, everybody in this room has been working on something for at least three or four minutes.
Yeah, what I'd like to do, um, is, is maybe schedule a time where I can meet Frank and I, Brooke, you know, sit down with, uh, each board member and review it in advance. So you're not seeing it the first time. So I'll reach out, um, email today and try to set it up.
So can, can we propose 5:30 or like the 6?
I'm happy we're locked down on a day, so I'll be pretty flexible.
Well, 5:30 workers do want to do 6.
I'm, I'm thinking about what Brent said earlier. I need hobbies. I'm pretty flexible, so.
I'm proposing 5:30 just because I just, so it's just like, yeah.
I don't know what time they said. I think they said 5:30.
We're gonna go 5:30 Tuesday, the, with that CD. Thank you. That was, the only board discussion topic I had. Is there any other? Hearing none, I am going to move to the adjournment. And we're adjourned.